I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice above all.
Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting is an advertised recording of the open public P A M.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon, and also as a reminder that the board has canceled the November fifth meeting.
That is correct. We'll talk about that again, goes in. Roll, uh, excuse me, um, roll call, yes.
Mr. Valter.
Here.
Mrs. Banker.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Rosensky.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp. And Mr. Mackinon.
President, can you just cover what we closed, please?
This evening enclosed the Board of Education on the negotiation discussed the Sabrell Education Association contract negotiations, under attorney-client privilege, tuition reimbursement from members who left the district, under personnel substitutes, substitute principals coming in to help with the observations, and interviewed the supervisor of mathematics business.
Thank you very much. Dr. Afano, I see on the agenda we have a presentation of my favorite program, the Summer Enrichment Program, that's run out of our upper elementary schools, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. Ms. Obrich, would you like to bring up your squad? Uh, I, I, how many years, Ms. Obrich, have we been doing the enrichment program?
Eight years.
Eight years, I think Mr. Mackinon and I were the big push, I think we started out with just a few children, maybe a couple of grade levels, and now it runs from K to six.
K through eight.
It's a K to eight, and it runs, it's a very good program.
Thank you.
So what Alfred will do, Ms. Obrich, you have your floor.
Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. My name is Nina Obrich, I was the director of this program for the past six years. For anyone unfamiliar with summer enrichment, we provide an academically-based summer program for district students in grades K through eighth. The premise behind the program is twofold. Number one, to provide a full-day camp environment for our students with games, activities, and crafts to make their summer fun and to enrich their natural talents. Number two, to keep the foundation of these games, activities, and crafts as academic learning. Instruction is rooted in the core content curriculum standards, and lessons are tailored to our children's specific needs. This summer found us dropping eggs from the rooftop of the U E S in a study of gravity, learning the principles of engineering through use of gumdrops, mini marshmallows, and uncooked spaghetti, and scripting travel brochures to understand the regions of our United States. Several of the dynamic teachers who create these incredible activities are here tonight. Please allow me to introduce Mrs. Carrie Fluschner, Mrs. Laura Hornline, Mrs. Dana Evanhausen.
I had a professor in graduate school who told me that as an educational leader, you're only as good as the people who work for you. These teachers put their heart and soul into everything that they do for the children in Sayerville. They're the reason why our kids come back year after year, and I'm honored to have worked with you for so many years. Um, finally, we've brought a few very special guests this evening. They are the ones whose thoughts about this program really matter the most, and I was trying to think of how to approach this scary public speaking kind of thing with them, and what they would say at the meeting. So I thought of my own kids who are in fourth and fifth grade, very close to your ages, and every night at dinner I asked them to tell me their highlights of the day, what they found to be, what was best for them, what they enjoyed most, what will become their memories. So that's the approach that we took tonight with our enrichment students. Tonight, they will share their highlights of the program. They've been with us for many years, and we've gotten to watch these children grow up, which is one of my highlights, and teachers as well. And they're going to tell us why they keep coming back year after year. We have Jonathan Gills, Rachel Bowler, and Jaden Emmett. Jonathan? Mr. Gills, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Jonathan. I am in fifth grade at the U E S. I have been coming to summer enrichment since kindergarten. These are some of the things I like about summer enrichment. One of the things I like about summer enrichment is Friday Fun Day, where we do water activities, we enjoy the beautiful summer weather outside, and watch movies. Also, I like to go on field trips. Even though we didn't have any this year, all the other years we went to the Statue of Liberty on a boat, we went to the Museum of Natural Histories in New York, also the Liberty Science Center and the Robinson. We did fun projects like the egg drop, when we tried to see whose egg could drop the farthest without breaking. It was fun when we saw Mrs. Brady on the roof dropping eggs. And we also did fruit crafts, which involved our theme of the week. When we had guests come in and learn about all sorts of new and exciting things based on our theme for the week. I also love the wonderful teachers, like Mrs. Obrich, Mrs. Hornline, Mrs. Duda, Mrs. Fluschner, Mrs. Evanhausen, and Mrs. Desmond. I like to see all my friends at the camp, and we have a lot of fun playing and learning together. I like that every week is something different. My most favorite weeks so far have been sports week and the No Theme Week. I also like family night, where we can show all the things that we did during the year to our parents, brothers, and sisters and friends. I come back every year because I learn a lot, I have a lot of fun, and I like to see my friends and teachers. Thank you.
The things I like most about summer enrichment program are all the teachers. If you have a problem, the teachers would be more than glad to talk it out with you. The teachers also know me well, so we can all share a laugh together. I also enjoy summer enrichment because of the crafts we do in class. They are always fun, and I enjoyed all of them. Normally, the field trips are fun, but since we didn't do them this year, the teachers made up for it. Every Friday, we would do Fun Day Friday. On Friday, we had lots of fun doing the slip and slide, sponge racing, Italian ice, sidewalk chalk and more. We even got to eat popcorn and watch a movie. Finally, we did hands-on craft. Everyone made a clam muffin and lollipop. I return years to years because of all this fun. Thank you.
The program, the program is awesome. The reason why is because I get to see my friends every year. We also have arts and crafts. We learn about different things like Australia. There is, there is a day called Fun Friday, and it's the best because we have a raffle every Friday, and the people that behave get tickets. We do other things like watch a movie on this theme of the week. We also do water activities or go outside and play. As you can see, summer enrichment is the best.
We were supposed, the three students in front of you represent our upper elementary school. We were supposed to have an elementary student who got a little nervous and backed out, as well as a middle school student who unfortunately couldn't meet her with us tonight. However, if it's okay with you, her mother would like to speak on her behalf.
Sure.
Thank you. Mrs. Furbush.
Good evening, everyone. I want to speak on behalf of both my daughters. I certainly don't want to tell you how much fun my daughter had, because I think all of them captured it, and I don't want to take anything away from them. But from a parent's perspective, we put our children in multiple camps as they grew up, being both working parents. We traveled far. We've heard about Mo and Westright, boring camps, bad food, stupid trips, you name it, they went through it, got awesome, they still like us. We were very happy to be contacted by Mrs. Brady one year when they started the camp, and it was first, fourth grade, I believe? Fourth through eighth grade. And that's when Ryan, who's a junior now in high school, started. From then on, we were told we're not going anywhere else. Megan couldn't wait and was excited, my younger one who's now going into seventh grade, that she could attend the camp when they lowered the grade level. And she's also been there ever since, and now still going into seventh grade, she just completed it as a sixth grader. And we're told not to schedule vacations during those six weeks. And it was only pulled out for soccer camp because we really had to do that. But, um, we first started going because it was convenient, safe, and educational. Discovered they had fun, they gave us no other choice to return, and this was in large part to Mrs. Brady. Her enthusiasm, her willingness to teach them, her willingness to let them teach themselves and teach each other was really what made us happy. And we heard about her every day, for at least an hour, to the point where it was like, okay, enough ready, I'll put dinner on, we're done. Megan enjoys the teachers that she returns to every year, and we're happy to see that. We're happy to see the consistency in who's teaching them and who's showing them. So these are also the people who remember year to year, what do you like to do, and how do you like to learn best, and what kind of fun do you like to have? And they're open to all of their ideas as well. She enjoys that there's hands-on learning and that she's treated like a camper, not a student, while she's still in the school environment. This past summer, my sister, who lives in Pennsylvania, contacted me and said that she'd like her daughter to spend time with us, because we don't, the cousins don't get to see each other as much. She goes to various camps in her area throughout the summer as well. And I said, sure, why don't you pick it while we're here, and let's give it a try. And Mrs. Obrich said this was okay, let her come. So she came for one week. By the third day, she called her mother begrudgingly, because she was having too much fun with us, and said, if it's okay with you, next year I'd like to come back for a minimum of two weeks. Although that was before she asked us if we would host her. She will be coming back. She continuously asks us, did you get the flyer yet, did you get the flyer yet, so mommy can pay. So she will be here, I'm sure, whether or not Megan goes. Megan, as I already discussed, would like to return. Because she's a little bit older, going into eighth grade, she would like to return as a junior counselor, unpaid, because she likes to go there, but she doesn't want to be called a camper anymore. She does enjoy being with the younger students and helping out. If it doesn't happen, we'll pay, because I think she's just going to go no matter what. I just want to let you know that this gives us peace of mind as parents. It's convenient. We live literally right behind there. We're happy with the teachers, we're happy with their concern, and their willingness to have fun with our kids and still teach them, and they don't even realize this. And that they still ask every summer, is Mrs. Brady going to come visit? And Megan was very upset the one week she was out was the week you came over. But thank you for your time, and I truly hope this program continues and flourishes, and I would do anything to help you guys get this out there, get more students involved. Thank you.
On a last, final note, when Dr. Afano was my principal at the middle school, he encouraged us to go to children's events, because it was important for them to see us there, to let them know that we care about them. The same is true for teachers. The Board of Education has always given us support on this program. You come out and see what we're doing, you attend our events, and on behalf of the teachers and myself, we do appreciate it. So thank you very much for your support. Welcome to us.
Just sort of, just sort of summed up very well, and the board said that this is a great camp, where kids can get a flavor of vitamin and say, man, it truly, really is an enriching program. Now, the other board members, just seeing newsletters that you would send us every week, and the things you were talking about, about the apologies to the flag, I was following that very closely. And it's a great program, and what's really interesting about this is that this was a grassroots program envisioned here in Sabrell. I know Ms. Bonnie Brady, who's probably in the back, was involved with it during the inaugural years. And now that she's the vice principal of the school, this is another example of the good things that happened in the U E S, and I'm looking forward to next year as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also would like to acknowledge Ms. Martin, too, that she's also always at the U E S helping out. And I know in its infant stages, which was all about 10 years ago, we started to put this together, and it started, basically, we looked at it in the elementary, and it's moved all the way through, which is nice.
Success breeds success. Okay, question on the agenda, the minutes, everybody should receive the amendments from the September 17, 2013 meeting. If anybody have any comments, additions, or listings of the minutes, if not, accept the motion to accept and file the minutes of September 17. Seeing none, accept the motion. I make a motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
Any roll call vote, please?
Mr. Valter.
Yes.
Mrs. Banker.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Rosensky.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes. Our student council representative is not present, so Dr. Afano, please take us to your report. Well, excuse me, District Highlights, do you have any, District Highlights?
Uh, yes, we do. Sabrell Warren Memorial High School Guidance Department, under the direction of Mrs. Donna Sacola, is working in conjunction with the Sabrell Library to offer parents a series of college preparation information sessions. Blackboard Connect was used to send out the information to all of the appropriate households. Uh, and I'll just, I'm not going to read the descriptions of these events at a perspective of time, but I'll just give you a highlight in terms of the titles and dates. The College Search Process 101, Saturday, October 5th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Free Kaplan SAT Prep Test, Saturday, October 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:30. Applying for Financial Aid for College 101, Saturday, October 19th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Congratulations to Sabrell Warren Memorial High School Music Teacher, Mr. James Kraft, and the High School Chorus, Vaxumana, for their stellar performance at the Somerset Patriots Playoff Game on Friday, September 20th. Vaxumana opened the game with a beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. Mr. Brian Cahill, Director of Community Relations to the Somerset Patriots, wrote to Mr. Kraft, Director of Vaxumana, and stated, "Our entire staff was so impressed by your performance. In fact, the owner of the team said it was one of the best performances he has ever heard at the ballpark. We would love to have you sing again on Friday for our very important game. It worked so well Friday, why not stick with it?" Therefore, Vaxumana was invited again to perform the National Anthem at the Atlantic League Championship Series Game on Friday, September 27th. We are very proud of Mr. Kraft and Vaxumana. Congratulations to all those mentioned.
And just as you know, Vaxumana will be also presenting at the November, I believe it's 19th meeting, in honor of Veterans Day, and so on and so forth, so there'll be a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation as well through Mr. Gentiles' department as well.
Excellent. Mr. Mackinon?
Just a side note, both times that they sang, they won.
They might be back all next year.
Maybe the Giants can use them.
Dr. Afano, please take us to your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Section A, Buildings and Grounds, I'll move that to Ms. Vicendo, who will be doing the violence and vandalism report.
Good evening, everyone. Under the No Child Left Behind Guidelines for Title Four Funding, the Board is requested to review the following annual district report of violence and vandalism for 2012-13 at this October public meeting. This report will be read this meeting, and public must be offered an opportunity to comment if they so desire. The report spans the board agenda pages two, three, and four. The board and public are invited to read as posted, and we now offer a moment for public comment.
Again, that's pages two, three, and four. Period between September 1st, 2012, to December 31st, 2012, which is noted in section A and B, C, D, and E, and period two, January 1st to June 30th, 2013, same sections as noted. Hearing no questions? Thank you, Ms. Vicendo.
I have a question.
Yes.
How are we doing compared to last year? Has the incidence gone down, or have you seen correlations?
I actually don't have that information in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Well, you were here last year, so you, yeah. Yeah, we do have that. That's a good question. Anything else? If not, Dr. Afano?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Moving to section B, Finance. One, two, and three are regular resolutions. Section four is our Class I through Class V substitute rates, including school nurse substitute rate. Hourly rates for non-certificated people, substitutes are listed. Number six is National Forum Counter to Education. Workshop, the teacher that will be going. Seven is approval of the equipment as noted. Then there is the approval of tuition contract for South Amboy, we're receiving a youngster at the course, so noted. There's a contract with the DI Group Architects for the all-at-school mechanical upgrades, the amount of $38,500. Apply the funds for learning environments disrupted from Hurricane Sandy for the proposed description of application of another $36,764. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, I'm sorry, twelve, thirteen, I'm sorry, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are cancellation of certain funds so that they can be balanced out for the end of the year. Number fourteen are services, professional services for our special education department, such as bilingual nursing and sign language specialists. Fifteen is a settlement agreement with our insurance, joint insurance company for the amount of $8,000 settlement. Sixteen is the creation of behavioral specialist positions noted, and salary grant offsets for Title 1A and Title 2A as noted on page eight. Any questions with section B?
I have a question. Number sixteen, what, what do you see as the salary?
Um, it's, I believe it's in here. It might have been put in late. I believe that is, it's, right, it's, it's, Jennifer Yelfrin, behavioral specialist is 66.6, plus $125, $125 is 66.778. That's for an M83.
Yes. I have a question, also on sixteen. Is this, didn't we always have a behavioral specialist? Let's get the...
We had one in the middle school, we're having a second one because we're bringing more students back.
Okay, so is this, but it's called district, it's going, they're going to float it?
I think they're going to, Mr. Brown, you want to just answer that question? They will float a little bit, but go ahead.
All right, absolutely. We have some of the needs in terms of, again, our initiative to try to bring as many students back into district, and because of that, we have, you can speak from a preschool perspective, from three years of age up, we have many requests for behavioral consultation, and so actually we're initiating a form in which they are going to present that to me, so I can determine now we benefit having two, thank you, hopefully, behaviors in district that will be able to supply, not only through our I R S procedures, but also to just regular classroom referral in terms of what we need for our students.
So is it only for special ed students, or is it regular?
Actually, no, it is both for regular ed and special ed, because it will pertain to the I R S process as well.
Okay, so now both behavioral specialists are floating, then? What isn't just a sufficiently assigned model school?
Uh, what we're trying to do is when the new person comes on, the skeleton, we're going to be looking at a number of different things. We presently have one behaviorist on staff who is doing all those different things, and so we want to keep her in those positions as well as bringing on a new person, and looking at her skills and see how we can invest it into the whole district perspective in terms of how we want to use the behaviorists.
I have another question. Page five, number five, the substitute salaries. Have we looked at any of those positions that we have, if we have trouble hiring if our salaries are on par to the market?
We did do a survey, Mr. Mackinon asked me to do a survey, and surveyed my county courts throughout the county. Call rates are competitive, they're similar, there, some areas were lower, some areas were about the same, a little bit higher, so we're competitive. I'm not saying we're, we're sort of in the middle of the road, we're at the median level.
So if we have a shortage, you don't think it's because of the salary?
We have a lot of substitutes. We have about 500 or 600 substitutes that are on our list. But we do at times get shortages at certain times of the year.
Okay, because I get to see an email that we were having shortage problems.
That could be true. But we do have them at certain times of the year.
Number two and number four, I'm with that, Dana.
Okay.
To the floor?
Okay, moving to C, Personnel Not Certified. We have a, a few resignations and a number of unpaid leaves as noted in three, four, and five. We have a part-time power professional being employed, and a contractual retirement, Nancy Jagaski, who was a longtime bookkeeper to the district of 33 years. I want to wish her well. I know Mr. DeAndrea, she's been a very good employee for many, many years. So good luck to Nancy, we have a little soiree for her Friday afternoon, and she says, she's very happy that she's moving onto retirement, and we wish her a lot of luck and a lot of health and happiness. Moving to number eight, these are new hires, as noted on pages nine and 10. I have some professional days on page 10, and a substitute individual on page 11 and number 10. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to D, Personnel Certified. We have the retirement of a nurse at the middle school, a resignation, unpaid leave, and transfer of a grade two teacher, and approval of a coaching position as noted in number five. Number six are the additional hours for the trainer as noted for the spring, winter, and fall sports. On page number 12, there's an in-school inspection person that is utilized at the middle school, three, four days a week, depending on the week, an assistant junior class advisor as noted for the high school, and the employment is noted. I have one correction on the employment on number nine, and Mr. Brown called me late in the day, due to an individual that's leaving early, we are amending a resolution and an appointment that we made last meeting, and it is Teresa Chuntz, C-H-U-N-T-Z, who's going into for Victorio Mangon, who's going out early on maternity. It's only, it originally was 10/18, her appointment, it's going to be 10/7, October 7th, she will start, which is Monday. I believe the teacher is leaving on Friday because her maternity date has been moved up, and her pay rate is the same, it's pro-rated at $44,753, B A Step 1. But again, she's starting, the board is requested to amend the hiring of Teresa Chuntz from 10/18/13 to 10/7/13 due to medical necessity. Number 10, page 13, are professional days. 14 are professional days. 11 and 12 are substitutes. Any question with that section B? With none, moving to policy. Attachment and Addendum A was listed and put out for the public. There are five different policies that we are going into first reading, and they are use of school facilities, which is a regulation, regulations, student assessment, grading, and reporting of grades, policy staff development, in-service educational visitation conferences, technology policy, and special education. This is the first reading. Mr. Syak, would you like to say something? I know you've done a very good job with your committee, and I know you, just sort of give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Yeah, just a few clarifying points. First of all, on the, on the school use facility policy, the additional language is basically for our protection. We always ask if a party using, for example, our school buses, has insurance, and they always do, but that doesn't necessarily mean the insurance covers us. So what we're asking now going forward for everyone is to name us as additional insured. So if they're using our buses, and one of their participants becomes injured as a result of that, their insurance now double ensures us, so to be able to go through their insurance as opposed to having to rely on ours. Any questions on 1330?
So does that mean their insurance would take first? So does that mean their insurance would take first though?
Their insurance should be first at that point because we're named as additional insured. Correct, Mr. DeAndrea?
I'm gonna say yes, but don't, don't hold me to that.
But this doesn't say that.
They just have insurance and you go after them. Unfortunately, as a board of education, we always seem to move to the top of the list because we are one of the deepest pockets.
But our insurance company, this is...
Yes, our insurance company, so.
It's a standard certificate, and normally it doesn't say first, second, or third. It's just your name.
Additional, additional insured. And just so the board is clear, some people have, we have already started requesting this. Some people have said, well, you already have my certificate for the use of the building. I am requiring one for each use so that it's clearly marked that it's for the bus or some other use so that it's not an umbrella after your...
Okay. The forty-one thirty-one is just the staff development. Those are just changes that are required by code based upon the new staff development processes. Any questions on that one? Okay.
So nothing in that policy is specific to Cervel? It's just...
I mean, there may be some existing languages that's specific to Cervel, but none of the changes are specific to Cervel. It's all, you know, regular New Jersey school board's language. Special education, same thing, all New Jersey school board's language. I know that this policy repeats itself several times in many instances. When it's, when we're monitored, they look for this policy intact as is, which is why it's so confusing. But that's the way they look for it, so we want to comply. It's like twenty-four pages. The state never says in one page what they can say in twenty-four. Mr. Brown, read that letter still. Yeah. The next policy, the technology policy, there's several portions of this. First of all, the first section on page one, which the public has a copy of, are the adjustments required by SIPA, the Children's Internet Protection Act, to make sure that your children are protected from either predators or inappropriate information on the internet and the procedures the district will use. This was advertised in the paper as a public hearing, so if there is any comments from the public or any questions from the public or the board, we will take them at this time regarding this particular policy. Any questions from the board on the SIPA piece? Okay, if you'll note in the minutes that there were no questions as a result of the public hearing. The remainder of the policy is cleanup of language which regards the use of cell phones. That information has been shared with Mr. Beers, and as I understand it, they're having an executive board meeting tomorrow and he will share it with his committee. The last piece is the Big Brother provision. That is also required by state law and is standard in J S B A language. Any questions on technology? Okay? Technology is ten.
Thank you, Mr. Sayah.
What about the grading?
I get it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were...
No, no, no. He's trying to move me along.
All right, all right.
The last one is the grading policy. This was adjusted at the board's request as a result of the exemption change. Now, when the policy committee met, we had a discussion about the intent of it, which was the original ninety average required for every single marking period and the midterm exam. The policy committee felt that if a student gets an eighty-nine or an eighty-eight in the first marking period, that that would then preclude them from the possibility of being exempt in their junior year. And since the goal of this, as we understood it, was to promote an exemption in an effort to raise our H S P A scores and put a much more of a focus on the H S P A testing process, the committee is recommending that that be changed to a floor of eighty-five in any marking period with an overall average of ninety. The original policy before you is the board's direction. We're bringing that to the board as our recommendation, and we're looking for board direction as to how you wish to proceed.
So the policy in front of us is the same with the presentation?
Yes, the policy, because that's what the board directed.
We want to lower the bar, lower the grade. The policy committee wants to lower the grade.
We wanted to allow students that if one marking period they were below a ninety, they weren't automatically knocked down, or at least to consider it and to talk about.
I think the goal, I think, that the administration of the high school was looking for was to raise the level of high proficiency in the HSPAs. Now, to do that, they put out the incentive of get a ninety in marking periods, and get a high proficiency in the HSPA, you can get an exemption. So now if we're looking for student growth in the HSPA, why not look for the student growth overall? Now, the kid who gets the eighty-nine, the eighty-eight says, oh, I had a bad marking period, I had a bad test, I'm done, I'm out. Now, of course, that kid's gonna keep, you know, moving forward, but the incentive is now gone. If we're looking to get the student growth in the HSPA, why not look to increase the incentive for student growth overall and keep that incentive going? So now our kids not only are getting student growth in HSPA, but are getting student growth all along.
Right, but what you're doing then is lowering the growth incentive in a regular marking period at an expense of trying to go for a HSPA grade. I don't, I don't see really, that to me is counterproductive of what I think I wanted.
Well, the policy committee, when they mentioned it to me, I felt that, you know, we spoke about that at that evening. Administration proposed there's a ninety in each marking period, and we were agreeable with that to nine oh.
Right, which is the same policy for the senior.
Right, which is what, this is what this current policy contains.
So this current policy is what we agreed upon and is the current policy.
Because that was the board's direction, so we didn't want to...
And anytime this board votes nine oh, let's leave that alone.
Look, the policy committee said this is what we want to do. It was my job to bring it to the board.
Okay. Does anybody have any interest in changing what we agreed upon last year? I mean, I understand your, your position, but I think I'm happy with what the administration proposed. If this was coming from the administration, I think that would be something that I would reconsider, but I think that airplane left the run.
Okay.
I agree.
If anyone's gonna make a motion to amend, then if not, we're gonna move forward.
Okay. Next issue. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to section F curriculum. There are no hints, but they will be next month. Okay? And I'm sure of that. Special services placements. It is noted on page sixteen and seventeen. Any question with special services placements? With none, moving to G curriculum, the approval retroactive of the BAST program for the two thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. There was some change of dates for the trip, so noted to the post office. There was a scholastic book fair at Altit School, which is number four, moving to page eighteen, number five, Halloween dance at all, family movie night at Eisenhower, another family night at Wilson School, holiday spectacular also at Wilson School. And at Samson Upper Elementary School, they will participate in the N J A event with AirTag students on January seventeenth. Also at the Samson Upper Elementary School, they will have and host meet the candidates night in the gymnasium on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, from seven o'clock to nine. Again, that's meet the candidates night at the S U E S, October twenty-fourth, that's Thursday night, seven o'clock to nine o'clock. There's a tricky tray at the high school, and there are a few field trips as noted to the Paper Mill Playhouse by the theater group at the high school. Any questions with that section? With none, we'll beat the H, support services. There are transportation waivers, the drill schedule that we used, and a retroactive trip that was discussed in the highlights, the Patriots game, and there are two other trips, so noted on page twenty, number five. And finally, the senior prom, which will be Friday, May sixteenth, is noted again at number six, and the company and the buses also noted. That concludes my report.
Any more discussion on the general vote of the public?
Just a question on the, on the buses. Do we have a bid bond or some assurance that they're going to show up?
I would have to check if Mrs. Shabat know we made changes at the last year's fiasco, so I cannot answer it either way right now.
All right, if you could just check and send us an email, because I know we had an issue and it's now happened twice in the time I've been here. We're two different bus companies.
I know there wasn't Classic Toys, they're pretty relevant. What about the, you remember what company that was? The Line?
The Line, that's it.
My cousin's lab tonight, but he's not with you.
Okay, seeing none, this time I go up to the public, any comments or questions on the agenda item? I will open up to the public again for any business that they come before this board. Any questions, comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to accept and file the superintendent's report.
So move.
I got a motion in the second, please take a roll.
Just about, yes, it's about, except for our resolution.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vashadov?
Yes.
Mrs. Brudinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sayah?
Yes.
Mrs. Denton?
Yes.
Yes. Now, Dr. Alfonso, would you please introduce...
Thank you, Mr. Mackenone. I'd like to introduce our new mad supervisor, Dr. Joseph, oh, sorry, Doctor Joseph Trivasona. Trivasona, we have a little wager about that. Joe, congratulations. Welcome to the... Now you gotta get certified, Danielson.
Have fun.
Have fun.
Delegate to New Jersey School Board Associates, Mr. Sayah, what's on the front?
I'll dispense with my formal report, given the fact, I know we've got some people waiting. The one piece of information I will share is that I was in New York and I was renominated for my NSBA board seat, so if all goes well, I'll be serving another three years with NSBA.
That's national.
That's national, yep.
The only person from the Jersey in the history of the organization.
Actually, it's in thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
I mean that session.
There you go.
Not voting twice.
Okay, other than the, the policy committee that met where we talked about that, so this time of discussion, we have...
Before you...
Oh, yes.
The policy committee. I wanted to discuss the hundred and thirty credit policy that didn't appear tonight.
It's not issued.
Oh, but it wasn't done. I thought there were some questions.
Yeah, the policy committee had some questions about it, given the twenty-two students that right now we're looking at of the class of two thousand fifteen that are at risk of not graduating, and we're concerned about what we're going to do to intervene for that. So I spoke to Mr. Mackenone and the policy committee, representatives of the policy committee, and I'm going to meet with the curriculum committee to finalize that.
What I suggested, Mr. Backo, that the next curriculum meeting, since Mrs. Bruno's based on both committees, that Mrs. Sayah had proposed to me some interesting data that he discovered. I think it's worthy of discussion. So I think if he came to the next curriculum meeting, we have to talk about it, and Mr. Bruno had it, that's worthy of discussion.
Okay, so then we're gonna set up a meeting, I guess, sooner than later? Because this is something we voted on, like a year ago.
It's got, yeah.
And it has to be, this policy needs to get done.
So pick a few days, and, you know, I don't think this is a big issue for us. I don't think this is gonna upset the F car. I think it's data worth looking at, and I think there are some solutions to keep it a little better. So, okay? So I think that might be good enough. Yep. And the discussion, Mr. Alfonso, you have the microphone, second. Would you, would you please just state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Daniel J. Alfonso, twelve, Lyle Court, Staten Island, New York. President Magano, board members, Mr. Alfonso, Mr. DeAndrea, members of the public. My name again is Dan Alfonso, and I appreciate the time that's been afforded to me tonight. Initially, I want to thank the board and the administration, and particularly the folks at Slover School for something completely, not dealing with this initiative, but last Thursday, I had reason to go to the Slover School to submit a package that all you folks have tonight. And I was brought to the outside of the school to be shown a very touching memorial that was done regarding my mom, with the planting of a tree and a plaque, and it meant the world to me. I found out how to use the camera on my cellphone finally, and I took a picture, and I brought it to my dad's rehab facility, and of course, he started crying, but he thanks each and every one of you for what you did. Thank you. I'm here tonight to honor your brother, the brother of the firefighters, the brother of the war veterans, and my father. As you know, my dad is Danny J. Alfonso, a legendary father, a legendary friend, and a legendary member of your school board. As you know, the town of Cerval is a, is a town rich in history. The town is known for honoring those exemplary citizens, educators, and war veterans throughout the years through the naming of over sixty streets after servicemen that lost their lives, the naming of the recreation center after Mickey Stedlach, who dedicated so many years for the kids with the recreation department, which was a wonderful thing that they did for Mickey, the naming of various parks in Bowlfield after former councilmen, after former mayors and the like, and, and your board, the actions that this board has taken throughout the years, naming the Samson School after the Samson family. You had three members of the Samson family, one of which I think was a school board member for ten years. Then you have the Arlit School, and you also have the, the Slover School. Coincidentally, Emma Arlit and Jesse Slover both served this district forty-three years, same as my dad. I did a little bit of research. The time has come, and it's been brought to my attention, and I've, I've thought about it for many years, but particularly after my mom's passing, a lot of folks came up to me and asked, you know, so many different things have happened in this town, so many people have been honored for, for various reasons, and nothing had been done permanently through the town, through the school board, to honor my dad in an infinite manner, and what would be appropriate to so honor him? So through much discussion with my family, with members of the community, such as the firemen that are here tonight, the war veterans that are represented here tonight, folks from the Morgan Panthers that my father was the founder of, people from the Hall of Fame Committee for this high school that my father started in two thousand three, I'm sorry, two thousand four, I found it time to request that this board honor my father in an infinite manner. And the request is the, the naming of the press box after my dad, the Danny J. Alfonso press box. What most people don't realize about my dad, and you'll see that, you know, through materials that I, that I submitted to you folks, a letter from me, a letter from my sister, a letter from a friend of my dad who used to be a West Point football player, to a joint letter from all the war veterans in this town, from all four fire departments representing two hundred firefighters in this town, okay, all of which are on duty, on duty tonight, to letters from, that was executed by eight former school board members, representing ninety-two combined years on this board, okay? If you put my father on there, you talk to a hundred and thirty-five years, okay? Al Cox is here representing them tonight. Rich Kozmuski is here on behalf of the Veterans Alliance and, and on behalf of all the firefighters in this town. You also see various articles that were, were done regarding my dad over the years. A recent article that was done, my dad was approached at the Saint Stan's Carnival, his first time out of, out of his rehab facility. He wanted to go there in the worst way, to see the people from town and see the people from, from his work. I brought him there, he got approached and was asked, can I, by the editor for the South Amboy several times, I'd like to, I'd like to do an article on you someday. So he said, be in touch with my son. He came to my dad's rehab facility. My father wanted to wear his bomber jersey that he got at his last board meeting, number forty-three for his forty-three years on your board, in addition to all the other artifacts that he's had over the years, his first picture of his first Morgan Panthers football team, nineteen sixty from when he started that, okay? Different thing with the fire company, his fire company, things that he's proud of. But if you read those articles, if you read that article, the one thing you will see, it will ask, he asked my father, what is the proudest thing you ever did? He said, the proudest thing I ever did was being a member of the school board. And he could read that article, it's there, okay? My father loved the school board, he was a dedicated member. Anything that me and my sister had going on over the years, or my mom, my father always made it to a board meeting no matter what. He was, he was strict on punctuality. He lived for these teams here all forty-three years on the school board. He was head of the athletics committee. In nineteen sixty-four, I just found a yearbook at my parents' house last week, you had three boys' sports, one girls' sport. Now look where we are, okay? Had all the Title IX issues that you had to deal with over the years, that was my dad's committee. And Kevin and other board members that have served my dad for many, many years and know my dad as a dedicated fan of Cerval will know that if you're ever looking for my father at a football game, he's either the press box or he's looking for Kevin to get a hot dog. So... he's either in the press box, or he's looking for Kevin to get a hot dog. So, I think that it's fitting to make the request to honor my father finally in an ultimate manner, in an infinite manner, and naming the press box after him. And one last thing, there's a nineteen ninety-three article that a lot of people didn't know about, okay? For his thirtieth year anniversary, my father was interviewed by the suburban, by Warren Ratlier, who's from Searle, and I spoke to Warren pretty recently. He even remember doing the article with my dad. My dad got summoned to the Wilson School on a Friday afternoon. He thought it was gonna be an assembly. My mom knew about it. My dad went and picked up, and my mother knew what was going on. He walked into the Wilson School for his thirtieth anniversary, okay? Again, he thought all the board members were gonna be there, which they were. However, there was a ceremony honoring my dad for his thirty years of service on the school board, and when he walked to the school, there was a thirty-foot banner, one foot for each year, that said, "World's Greatest Board Member." Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to have a question come up on behalf of the Searle, all four Searle Fire Departments and the, uh, veterans in town.
Good evening. My name is Rich Kazmoski, sixty-one Wilson Avenue, Farland. I am proud to say that I am a member of the Searle War Memorial High School Hall of Fame, two thousand and nine, something that Danny had established for us. But I'm also here tonight representing two community-wide organizations in support of the naming of the football field press box to the Danny J. DiPaolo press box. With my co-chairman on the Searle Veterans Alliance, past commander Ken Kelly, we worked on this, we discussed it, we fought a little bit about what we wanted, and we finally got the VFW and the American Legion in support of naming the press box to Danny J. DiPaolo press box. Both veterans organizations, through the Veterans Alliance, give their full support in this endeavor. But I'm also here as representative of the Searle Fire Department, an organization that Danny has dedicated well in excess of fifty years to. Throughout the past forty that I have worked with Danny in the fire department, there is no one more dedicated or willing to do whatever necessary to help the people in their time of need. But most importantly, I'm here as a parent of a multi-challenged, special needs child. Thirty-five years ago, when we adopted our son, there came a time when decisions had to be made regarding his education. The administration at that time was unable to come to an agreement that would satisfy us and provide my son with the best possible education. Not knowing how to proceed, and the so-called professionals not understanding our problem, or advising them, or advising us, or the options open to us, we had no idea where to turn. I contacted Danny. He was the most helpful, kind, understanding, and dedicated person, willing to do all of his power to help us with our challenged son. He assured us that whatever was necessary would be done, and it was. He kept his word, and my son finished high school with a diploma from Searle War Memorial High School. We have just heard one story from one parent, but let me assure you, there are hundreds of grateful parents in this, in Searle that Danny J. DiPaolo has helped throughout his forty-three-year illustrious career on a board of education. His fifty-plus-year career in the Searle Fire Department, we had risked his life to help others show where this man's heart is. He did not serve for a board of education for forty-three years, the Searle Fire Department for over fifty, or his enlistment in the United States Army during the Korean War for self-protection. No, he did all this because of a dedicated individual that he is. There would be no greater honor for Danny than to show his support at athletic events by the naming of this press box. Therefore, let it be known that the Searle Fire Department, the Searle Veterans Alliance, this parent, and I as an individual, give our fullest support in the naming of the Danny J. DiPaolo press box. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, let's speak to, uh, from, here from, excuse me, Al Cox, on behalf of the former school board members.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. President, Dr. Alphano, ladies and gentlemen, nice to see you all again. On a good topic, I'm here to speak on behalf of Danny. Uh, as you probably all know, Danny is a cousin of mine, uh, pretty much grew up with him. So, I saw firsthand his interactions with both young Danny here and his sister, and, uh, that just spilled over onto the school board. When I came on, Danny kinda took me under his wing, as he did most of the young board members, and kinda led us in the right direction on how we are here to serve the public, not the public here to serve us. And, and that is true of what Danny told us. And a way Danny got to reach out to the community most often was through sports. And what a, what better way could it be to honor him in a fashion by naming the press box after him? And if any of yous do attend the football games, where is Danny? He's either in the press box or chasing Kevin for the hot dog. So, they are true statements. But I think, most importantly, when you sit back and vote tonight, and, and I, I know the position you're in having sat where you sit, having to change a policy that perhaps is something that is not normal for us to do here in Searle, to name a specific location after a specific person. But I think what you need to keep in mind today is, however the vote comes out, if it comes out successfully, to have Danny still here with us, to be able, hopefully, to sit at the, the fifty-yard line and see that curtain come down with his name, although we lost Lorraine, and she won't be able to be here to share it with him, Danny and his sister will be. And I think that is just an outstanding, um, comment from the board, as Danny always said, that we're here to serve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Uh, before I pass the microphone to you, to the president, you know, I want to, again, thank everyone. Um, this would truly be an, an amazing honor for my dad at, at a time in his life. Uh, that would be most appreciated. Uh, I think some of the board members were at the, uh, football game a couple of weeks ago when I brought my dad, and he sat in the end zone in his wheelchair, and he was just so proud. He was so proud, so happy to be there. He looked at me and he said, "I never thought I'd be here again." And of course, it broke my heart, but it also made me proud that he is here. So, uh, you know, one initiative that I was always proud of too, that continues to this day, is a moment of silence that was instituted in this school system back in the nineteen eighties. You know, my dad was interviewed at his lumber company by Channel Two news, by one of their head reporters. My dad would toe-to-toe, bucking every, all the things going on in the world at that point in time, and this board, by unanimous vote, implemented that policy that continues to this day, and there are only two school districts here, and I think one down in Camden County, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, that still have a moment of silence in place. Thank you.
Before the board makes a decision, I'd like to open up to public any comment on this, uh, what Mr. DiPaolo just presented. I will open up again for the public any business that may come from the board. Does anybody from the public, other than who's already spoken, have any comments or want to speak about this?
Mr. McEnroe, could I just?
Yes, of course.
I just want everyone to know that I support this endeavor. Um, Mr. DiPaolo was nothing but a professional when I came in, although he tried to get me to be head baseball coach when I was, uh, um, the, the principal of the middle school, and we had a couple of funny conversations about who should be the head coach at that particular time, because the bell back came in. But, um, Danny's always been very fair to me, Mr. DiPaolo, and I just want everyone to know that I'm in support of this initiative.
Thank you. Any comment from the board? I think somebody should say something, so I guess I'll jump in. Yeah, well, I, I, I will, I can, I can relate the press box to, to Mr. DiPaolo. Going to most of the football games, he would always be there. And I made a mistake, um, second year on the board, as the first year as the president, went to a football game, it was raining. So, I thought, hey, I'm the president, I'll go sit in the press box, see who's gonna throw me out. So, I went in the press box, and he was sitting in the chair, and then Mr. DiPaolo came. And I didn't know, anyway, I only overlapped him, and then on board he was staring at me. So, I said, "Well, what's, what's with him?" He said, "Well, you're in his chair." So, needless to say, I watched the football game outside. So, I can relate the, the press box to Mr. DiPaolo. That's my comment.
Uh, I would definitely say, you know, the press box is very fitting. Uh, 'cause like I said, when I, when I first got on the board, you wanted to find Mr. DiPaolo, he was in that press box, and, you know, a hundred years from now, you know, he'll still be looking down on, uh, on, on the bombers, which is a, a, a very nice sentiment. Uh, you know, when, when you look at a decision like this, you have to look at the, the total magnitude of the service, and, you know, e- even aside from, you know, the, the service to the fire department, the service to the rest of the community, when you look at the board service alone, of forty... ...to do this, you know, we're coming up on, on homecoming. This will be, you know, you talk about the magic of the number forty-three, this will be another important milestone, because this will be the fiftieth homecoming here at Searle War Memorial High School. It'll also be the fiftieth anniversary of Mr. DiPaolo's first appointment to the Searle Board of Education. So, I think the timing piece as well is also unique, and we've got an opportunity here to do something really special. And as, you know, a board of director member for national school boards, one of the things that we're constantly fighting, especially now, it wasn't so much of an issue when, when Danny was on the board, but nowadays, people are questioning the relevance of school boards, the relevance of community governance of public education. And I think a community stepping up and saying, you know, "We want this, we value the contribution that someone has made for forty-three years to the public school system as a volunteer, as a policymaker, as a board of education member," to me also lends credence to the fact that, you know, board members are valued for their contribution, and in particular, forty-three years of service is exceptionally valuable.
Anyone else?
I, I, uh, don't want to take anything from Danny's volunteering. I know we've been down this road before, and we normally don't name structures, and I haven't been around long enough to know the history. Um, I just, I would need someone to at least make me feel comfortable, why the press box? Why not? Is somebody gonna come here next week and say, "Well, we have alumni from the school," and maybe, "Why didn't you do this?" I mean, this is just being brought to us tonight to make a decision. I'm sort of looking from the other side, like, I know we normally don't name structures, like, is someone gonna come next week? Well, we have some for a football player, why didn't you name the press box after him? What is the actual connection between the press box?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's related to, to athletics. He was always in it, and it relates to my stories. And I, I think, you know, you look at each case individually, and you, and you look at each case on the merits. Um, forty-three years, I know, you know, that's almost as long as I, you know, we've been around.
Right. I don't, I'm just looking more specifically, like, the press box. Why not, like, say, erect something by the football field, for instance? It's, it ties to the football more than anything here? Is that where this is coming from?
My thoughts are this, okay? When you say that you're not used to a structure, um, this board took action back in nineteen ninety-nine, naming part of this school after Dr. Parnell. So, the Dr. Marie Parnell Media Center of Searle War Memorial High School was unanimously adopted by this board back then. When it comes to the press box, we thought it was the most fitting thing because my father was always there. He could see the whole school campus from here, which he loves so much. He can see the junior high school campus, which he loved so much because he was the president of the school board for two years while that school was being constructed, and it makes the most sense. My father is, has always been a huge supporter. When I grew up playing for the Morgan Panthers, I played there every Sunday on that high school football field. That's where we played our games, okay? So, besides, and, and again, I emphasize forty-three years, okay? If you take Kevin off the board and you, you combine the other eight board members, you're looking at about thirty years, okay? I'm looking at forty-three years, my dad alone, and all forty-three of those years, he was the head of the athletics committee for this board of education, implementing policy, hiring coaches, dealing with board members, getting the best equipment for all the teams, not just the football team. Thank you.
So, you think the press box is where his heart was here? Is that why you chose that? As a?
I, I think that that's where my dad's heart and soul will be fifty years from now. Everyone, as people have mentioned, you're looking for my dad, he was there because he was the best seat in the house, and, uh...
Best order to drink.
And, and he, and, and he is so, he is so proud. I mean, you read the articles, you know, right? My father came to Searle. You read some of the, uh, of the articles regarding as a firefighter. He, he fell in love with the town. You know, my dad not only was, has been a resident here since nineteen fifty-six, nineteen fifty-seven, but with my uncle John, God bless his soul, you know, they, they ran a business in, in town and owned property in town as a business for over fifty years as well. So, his life has been given to the town of Searle, and I would like him honored appropriately. Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions? Dan, what, what year did you, when you subscribe?
From? Nineteen seventy-seven. Excuse me? Nineteen seventy-five. Anything, anything else?
All right, Dan. I will make a motion to that we designate in perpetuity, writing this down, the, uh, press box at War Memorial Stadium as the Danny J. DiPaolo press box. Dan, you second?
Second.
Okay, good roll call, both of you.
Designate the Searle War Memorial High School press box as Danny DiPaolo.
In perpetuity. Just because you can't spell it, doesn't mean you can't.
I can add, I can't spell. Not too good at any of it.
And we, I assume you say dedicate, you mean we're gonna put a sign, or, I mean...
What kind of cost you're offering?
We're gonna put a sign up there or something.
Well, let's take a vote first. And, I mean, I think, there's gonna be a cost. I'm, I'm sure Mr. DiPaolo has it figured out, and I think any cost is gonna be minimal, and I don't think that's gonna be a showstopper. I think there are organizations that are willing to, uh, get involved in that aspect.
Uh, Mr. DiPaolo and I, uh, spoke about it. We'll take care of it.
Okay, so this vote is only to dedicate it, not to do anything else? Is that what we're...
Well, I'm assuming we dedicate it, put a little plaque.
That was what I was asking, we're gonna do something.
Yes, correct. Name it, a plaque, or something like that. Okay, through a poll.
Mr. Bauter?
Yes.
Mrs. Backdon?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Rozinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mr. DePinta?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp? I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. McEnroe?
Yes. Um, Mr. DiPaolo, what I want to do is I'm gonna ask Mr. Syak, kind of be the layers onto the board with you to work out the specifics, um, about, um, how it's gonna look, how it's gonna appear, and, and the process, at least the dedication, you're gonna work that out. And obviously, Kevin, Syak volunteered to, to do that. Did you?
I, I have now. Also, for the benefit of the public, uh, Mrs. Strapp had a death in the family, which is why she's not here this evening.
On behalf of my entire family, my dad, who knows zero about this. Um, I've been working behind the scenes for the longest time trying to do this for him, and, uh, he may be going to a football game Friday night, and I can't be there. My uncle may be bringing him, so I don't know if mom's the word, or, uh, but I, I, I deeply appreciate it on behalf of my family, on behalf of my beloved mom.
Thank you. You've never made it keep a secret too well in Searle, so you might want to keep him in overage for the next two weeks.
Thanks. I can't keep him away from that stadium, so, thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to open up to public for any questions or comments.
I have one more question.
Hold on. Mrs. Backdon?
I have a discussion, back to sports. Um, I know we've talked about this a few times, the budget where we had the bowling coach and the golf coach, and I haven't seen any postings, and I know bowling season will probably be coming sooner than later. Have what's going on with the bowling coach? Or the golf coach?
The last you told us, JK was gonna be posting.
Yeah, JK was supposed to be posting. I haven't seen anything come through.
We posted one golf coach, uh, we had a swimming coach, that's right.
Yeah, we had the swimming coach tonight.
Got a post.
Got it posted.
Right, but we keep asking, and I haven't seen it.
Mr. Charlie posting.
Can you just make sure he gets it posted, so we don't have to deal with this again?
Okay.
And you might as well get him to do both, since golf will probably be here soon. I know it's spring, and bowling's a winter, I guess. I know one might be a little bit more pressing, but we might want to get them both over with at the same time.
Okay, Mrs. Brinkley?
Got it. Just an update on the technology. The Chromebooks are starting to come in. Not the ones from the Sandy money, but the regular Chromebooks that we ordered have started to come in. They're already configured and ready to go into the hands of our students. iPads are already out, distributed to the buildings. It's up to the administration how they're going to, what they're gonna do with them. And 20 smart boards are in for the high school, the middle school, and for the UES. And they should be delivered and set up shortly. And I thought that you could, like, an update.
Excellent. Appreciate that. We can do that. Thank you. Anyone else want to do a vote? At this time, I'll open up for public. If anybody has any comments, questions, or to the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Anybody from public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Turner.
Someone?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.